I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, call roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
President.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Brzaska.
Here.
All right, and we do have a quorum this evening. Moving into our first item, which is public participation, the first one, A, is the swearing in of our new police officer chief.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. President, other distinguished board members. So tonight I have the honor of introducing our newest Montgomery certified police officer. I know I'm usually up there asking forgiveness, giving you bad news, or begging for money, but tonight we have some good news. I do ask that Kendall Wilson, our Police Fire Commission Board Chairman, come down and join me for this. So tonight I get to introduce you to Giovanni Chides. Giovanni, would you like to come down with your guest? So it's great that we get to do this with other members of our police department here, showing their support. Oh, please, your whole family, come on down. So Officer Chides is a Montgomery resident. He's lived in Montgomery for the past 10 years. Grew up on the east side of Aurora. He is the 2020 Illinois State Scholar Graduate for East Aurora High School. Yes, that's nice. He's the youngest of four sons, born as Socorro and Jose Chides here tonight. Policing does run in his family. His brother is an Aurora police officer, his cousin is a Sandwich police officer, and his uncle is a retired DuPage County sheriff. Giovanni speaks fluent Spanish, writes it, reads it, so he's a definite asset for our community. In his free time, he likes to day trade, and with all that newfound wealth, he travels a lot to Durango, Mexico, where his family is from. He's accompanied by both his parents and three older brothers, and he is currently in the Field Training Officer Program, will be for the next 12 weeks. So, Mr. President, if you wouldn't mind.
All right, you'll raise your right hand if you have to. I say your name.
I, Giovanni Chides.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge, and I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you. (applause)
Can I just have you very swingy this? Back and you're sort of out of angle.
It's not going to make any difference. You're not going to roll today. It's pretty rare that we get to swear in a new officer who has lived in the village for such a long time, so I, as a resident, appreciate that, and I wish you the best of luck with the Village of Montgomery. All right, I'll move on to the proclamation that we have this evening. I'll read the proclamation and entertain a motion for approval. This is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month for September of 2025. Whereas September is recognized as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to promote awareness surrounding suicide prevention resources, the simple goal is to start the conversation, de-stigmatize it, and help connect people with the appropriate support services. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background, and whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. Whereas the Village of Montgomery is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community in simply being available to one another. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. Now therefore, as Village President of the Village of Montgomery, I do hereby designate the month of September of 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and I urge all residents to take the time to understand mental health through education and recognize that we need to take care of one another, and that a simple phone call or message can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer.
So moved. Sorry. Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
All right, perfect. Please, we have a picture. Do you have something to say?
Good evening. First, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on an issue that touches so many lives, often quietly, often invisibly. Suicide and mental health challenges are not easy topics to discuss, but they are too important to ignore. As a police social worker, I see firsthand the pain and isolation that many individuals carry. I believe it is our shared responsibility to create spaces where people feel safe to speak, to be heard, and to be supported. We must remind our community that no one is ever truly alone, there is always someone willing to listen, to help, and to walk alongside them. We have to continue to advocate for those who, for whatever reason, cannot advocate for themselves, and continue to be a bridge to the resources they need. The number of referrals that are received for mental health concerns and suicidal ideation is not just a statistic, it's a call to action, and it tells us that more must be done. We, as a community, have the power to change the narrative. We can educate ourselves and others about the warning signs, encourage open conversations, and we can ask the hard questions with compassion and courage. Let's commit to being present. Let's commit to being kind, and let's commit to being the light for someone who may be struggling in silence. Thank you.
All right, with that, if you leave now, we will not be offended. Thank you for coming, and good luck. This is an open meeting, so if you want to stick around. Wait just a second. All right, I'll move on to public comment this evening. Is there any member of the public that's here tonight that wishes to address the board on any topic? Any public comment this evening? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. The consent agenda, three items. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the August 25th Village Board Meeting, the Accounts Payable Summary Report through September 8th of 2025, and C is the Windy City Amusement October Carnival Permit Waiver Fee.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call roll.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0, thank you. Under items for separate action today, A is ordinance 2146, amending the municipal grocery occupation tax. This is waiver first, and pass it down the second. Go ahead.
Good evening. So this is the grocery tax that was passed. A lot of municipalities, along with the IML, have been in an uproar over this because the statute was unclear. Montgomery was lucky, they got a letter from the Illinois Department of Revenue saying you need to amend your language. So the statute says, in Section A, for the retailer's tax, it's 1% of grocery receipts. In Section B, it says the same rate as above, which often you would assume would be 1% of grocery receipts, and that's not the case. So IDOR has corrected our language, so we just need to pass the correct language. So it's no change from previous, just our language is now accepted by the Illinois Department of Revenue.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries, thank you. Item B tonight is ordinance 2143, granting variations on zoning requirements for a parking lot at 277 to 299 Montgomery Road. This is Douglas Commons LLC, and this is second reading. Director App.
Thank you. If you recall, at your August 11th meeting, the trustees, you expressed some concerns about the lack of landscaping in front of the parking lot expansion, so you requested that the petitioner provide a landscape, perimeter landscaping along the Montgomery Road frontage of the expanded area. So he has revised his plans and submitted them, providing the required minimum eight-foot landscape area along Montgomery Road that'll be planted with four trees and groupings of perennials and ornamental grasses between the trees. This proposed landscaping will meet our landscaping requirements for perimeter landscape parking lot, and the petitioner has requested not to have to install the landscaping until the spring after the water main project has been completed, and staff has no objection to this request. So the attached ordinance does add a condition that they do have to meet the landscaping requirement there along Montgomery Road and provide that minimum eight-foot landscape buffer in ornamental grasses, and we'll work with them on finalizing the plan and getting the landscaping installed in the spring once construction is completed along Montgomery Road.
I have a question about, I thought there was some mention that there was going to be a walkway or a bike path put in there at some point, or is that not in this particular place?
No, that is correct. As part of the water main project, a sidewalk will be installed along Montgomery Road.
So we're basically just tearing it up just at this point, coming up. I just don't want them to plant it and then we pull it out after we said we want that there.
Correct. I think that's why they want to wait till the spring, because we're going to be doing the water main and the sidewalk this fall or early in the spring next year.
Okay, and so then we shouldn't have a need to do that anytime soon again.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Debbie?
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
That carries 6-0, thank you. Item C is Resolution 2025-030, authorizing a mobile food facility license for El Taco Rico at 299 Montgomery Road. If you're keeping track, that's the same location.
Yes, so Manuel's Tacos currently holds a license to be operating at 299 Montgomery. They are no longer going to be operating, so the property owner has found a new food truck to be operating at that location, El Taco Rico, so they've applied for their license, and so the resolution before you would replace Manuel Tacos with El Taco Rico.
Tomasz?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Debbie.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
No.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
No.
And that carries 4-2, thank you. All right, items D, E, and F, I believe, are all related, so we'll discuss them all the same, but the first item, I'll read them first here, is D, Recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission of PZC 2025-013, Annexation, Rezoning, and Variations at 29 Baseline Road. Then we have the enacted ordinance 2147, annexing the property, first reading, so we won't take action. And item F is granting the rezoning variations, and that is also first reading. Tony?
Yes, so this may sound somewhat familiar, but the petitioner has been before you before. They purchased the property at the end of Boar Avenue and were annexing in and got some special uses for outdoor storage and truck repair and sales, so they have now purchased the property immediately to the south of that property at 29 Baseline Road, and so they are requesting to annex that in. They are proposing an office building and a storage building for the property, and no truck repair would be performed on that site, so no additional special uses are needed, and this is just for ancillary uses to the business. There are less than 10 parking spaces, so the landscaping that typically is required for a parking lot is not required, because it only applies to 10 or more, parking lots of 10 or more, so no landscaping is required for that. However, because they are adjacent to residential, they are required to provide buffer yard landscaping along that east property line where it's adjacent to residential. Due to floodplain and floodway issues along that area, they are requesting a variance to reduce that requirement. Additionally, there are existing fences out there. They don't necessarily meet our requirements for buffer yard perimeter landscaping, however, they're asking that that be considered sufficient at this time. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did hold the public hearing last week and voted 4-0 to recommend approval with conditions. They did add a condition from the staff conditions that there shall be no truck repair or storage allowed on the subject property. This is because there were some residents, unincorporated residents, that came to the meeting and expressed some concerns about other properties that do truck repair in the area that are unincorporated and some of the nuisance that's involved in that, and so just to make it clear that no truck repair would be happening on this particular property. They did add that condition in their recommendation. So the ordinances before you do include that condition, and that's for the rezoning and variance ordinance, I believe it's in the annexation ordinance. And it is two ordinances because it is an annexation, and that has to be recorded separately, so. The petitioner is here to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks.
I have a question related to the fencing not meeting the requirement. Are we close, or is it not even?
There are two different fence lines, so there's their existing fence line that is part of this property, and then the adjacent property house has a fence as well. Our buffer yard requirement requires an eight-foot tall fence, and the fence over there is between four and six feet in height, so not quite.
Is the petitioner agreeable to that additional planning commission recommendation or condition?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll take a motion to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation.
Okay. That's already, that's item D, and there's been a second. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Any objection to putting the last two ordinances on for consent?
Nope.
All right, perfect, thank you. Thanks. All right, our last item for separate action tonight, G, is ordinance 2149, approving a budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2026. This is waiver first, pass it down the second reading. Director Minnick?
Thank you. As the board is aware, we currently have the opportunity for a fall carnival in conjunction with the Halloween safety event taking place the weekend of October 17th through the 19th at the Stewart Sports Complex. We're anticipating that this is going to be a fairly basic carnival event consisting of some rides and some booths and perhaps some basic food options, and as this opportunity has arisen during the past few weeks, and it's currently not included, the activities for this particular event are not included in the fiscal year 2026 budget. Staff has prepared a basic budget amendment and a basic analysis of revenues and expenditures to account for the activity of the event. Currently, it is anticipated that the amounts will, it is intended that the amounts of all the village costs will be offset by the event revenues. There will be no negative financial impact to the fiscal year 2026 budget, and the budget does include staffing costs as well as basic signage and advertisement for the carnival. Staff does recommend approval of the budget amendment ordinance as included in the packet, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Perfect, thank you.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Debbie?
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Any objection to putting the last two ordinances on for consent?
Nope.
All right, perfect, thank you. Thanks. All right, our last item for separate action tonight, G, is ordinance 2149, approving a budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2026. This is waiver first, pass it down the second reading. Director Minnick?
Thank you. As the board is aware, we currently have the opportunity for a fall carnival in conjunction with the Halloween safety event taking place the weekend of October 17th through the 19th at the Stewart Sports Complex. We're anticipating that this is going to be a fairly basic carnival event consisting of some rides and some booths and perhaps some basic food options, and as this opportunity has arisen during the past few weeks, and it's currently not included, the activities for this particular event are not included in the fiscal year 2026 budget. Staff has prepared a basic budget amendment and a basic analysis of revenues and expenditures to account for the activity of the event. Currently, it is anticipated that the amounts will, it is intended that the amounts of all the village costs will be offset by the event revenues. There will be no negative financial impact to the fiscal year 2026 budget, and the budget does include staffing costs as well as basic signage and advertisement for the carnival. Staff does recommend approval of the budget amendment ordinance as included in the packet, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Perfect, thank you.
So moved. Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries 6-0, thank you. All right, our last item tonight is item for discussion. This is the community survey results presentation. Christina?
Tonight, we are excited to share the results of our recent community survey. After digging into our archives, we do believe this is the first survey of its kind conducted in the Village of Montgomery, so kudos to our village board and the staff for their foresight and advanced planning making this survey a reality. This effort has given our residents an opportunity to anonymously and in a statistically meaningful way share their feedback so we can continue improving our community for today, tomorrow, and well into the future. To help us better understand the feedback we received, we are honored to have Dr. Mindy Schneiderman, the Assistant Director of Northern Illinois University Center for Governmental Studies, with us this evening. Dr. Schneiderman leads NIU Survey Research and Data Visualization Team and has over 30 years of expertise in survey research. She has managed projects for local governments, libraries, park districts, nonprofit organizations, county health departments, and mental health boards. Her work has been widely published, cited in the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal, and has even been used in U.S. Congressional testimony. This evening, Dr. Schneiderman will walk us through the overall results, the key themes of the survey. As you listen, we encourage you to focus on these big-picture findings. There will be opportunities at a future meeting or small group discussions to explore specific questions or data points in greater detail. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Schneiderman.
Thank you for having me. Okay, I'm going to start by going over some background and purpose of the survey. The methodology that was used is called a multimode survey. We have been using this methodology for about a decade now. It works very well. It gives us a representative group of respondents, and it reaches different groups of respondents. So some groups are more difficult to reach than others, so we use these different methodologies to reach the different demographic groups. So we start off with, and I'll go through the methodology in detail, but it's basically online first, mail survey second, and then telephone reminder calls third. The purpose of the survey was to determine residents' opinions of living in the village and the village provided services. The Center for Governmental Studies worked closely with the Village of Montgomery staff throughout the project, and especially Christina. Okay, so the methodology, start with the questionnaire. So the questionnaire was designed jointly between the Center for Governmental Studies and the Village of Montgomery staff. There was 48 questions, which is about average for most of our surveys. It seems long, but they're real quick, easy kind of checkboxes. There's some open-ended responses, but respondents answer in 10 minutes or less, which is usually what we aim for. The survey covered a variety of topics, including quality of life in the village, village provided services, village customer service, communications, and personal and household characteristics. The questionnaire was translated, once it was final, was translated into Spanish by an outside firm that does Spanish translations. Who received the survey? A random sample of 2,000 households in the village was selected, and it was provided by, again, another outside firm. This one's called the Marketing Systems Group. There's only two survey sampling firms in the United States. They just do survey samples, and one of them is Marketing Systems Group in Pennsylvania, and they provided basically the list of who was going to get the survey, the 2,000 households. It's done by mailing address, so it's selected randomly by mailing address, and then matched to the mailing address is a name of a person in the household, usually the head of the household's name, the mailing address, of course, an email address, and a telephone number. Now, email addresses, we don't get email addresses for all the households, but we get a good proportion, and then probably like 85 to 90% email addresses, and then we have students who use a proprietary database that we've purchased to get the rest, or the majority of the other emails. There are households that don't have emails, but that's how we go about getting the information. Okay, data collection. So the online, like I said, we start with the online survey. So we program the survey in our online survey software, and then we have an invitation. Basically, it's the same as the cover letter, so it basically says, you know, the survey is being done by the Village of Montgomery, by the Center for Governmental Studies, you know, you were randomly selected, it's important you participate, your responses will be confidential, et cetera, et cetera. So each participant gets this invitation email that was sent out January 13th, 2025. Each household or participant has a unique ID number, so we could track them, so we know who responded and who hasn't responded, okay? They don't know they have an ID number attached to them, but they do, not at this part of the survey at least. They got up to probably like 85, 85 to 90% email addresses. And then we have students who use a proprietary database that we've purchased to get the rest, or the majority of the other emails. There are households that don't have emails, but that's how we go about getting the information. Okay. Data collection. So, the online, like I said, we started with, we start with the online survey. So, we program the survey in our online survey software, and then we have an invitation. Basically, it's the same as the cover letter. So, it basically says, you know, "The survey is being done by the Village of Montgomery, by the Center for Governmental Studies." You know, "You were randomly selected. It's important you participate. Your responses will be confidential," et cetera, et cetera. So, each participant gets this invitation email that was sent out January 13th, 2025. Each participant, each household or participant has a unique ID number, so we could track them, so we know who responded and who hasn't responded. Okay? They don't know they have an ID number attached to them, but they do. Not, not at this part of the survey, at least. They got up to six reminder emails, so if they didn't respond after the first email, they got six more emails. That's how we get a representative group. The more contacts we make, the more representative of the respondents. So, those people that are easy to reach respond right away, and those that are hard to reach, you've got to keep sending them more and more. As you know, with marketing, you know, something similar. Then, they, if they didn't respond to the online survey, they got a mail survey. That was sent with the cover letter, basically similar language to the email. And they were sent a postage-paid envelope along with the, the cover letter and the survey, the questionnaire, to return it to, to the Center for Governmental Studies. We get about roughly 45% with each method, the online and the, the mail. And then the last 10%, they get reminder phone calls to get that last 10% of the responses we need. So, the reminder phone calls are made by students who work for the Center for Governmental Studies. They speak both English and Spanish. And they call and they offer at that point to give the, the web address, again, with an, with their ID number, so they could get into the survey, or to mail the survey again, we'll mail it. Or if somebody says, you know, "I have trouble reading," an older person maybe who has difficulty, or, or someone with a disability, they will read the questions over the phone at that point and take answers down. So, we offered three different methods for people to, to respond. Let's see. The survey closed May 1st. It took us a little bit longer than usual to get the number of responses we needed. We need 500 because of the popul, your, the demographics of your population. Okay. Let's see. So, we've got 500 completed surveys. What we do at this point, and people question the 500, I will tell you straight off, national surveys require 1,000. Complete, oh, the whole nation, 1,000 completes to be at that margin of, what they call the margin of error, plus or minus 3%. This survey was at 4.2 percentage points of margin of error, of error, which just means if we did the, picked another random sample, did the survey again, the results will be plus or minus 4% of what they are. So, if there was 80% satisfied with, let's say, the village overall, it would be 80, between 84% and 76% for plus or minus with another sample. So, so that gives you like the accuracy, in a sense. Okay. Data weighting. So then, we look at the respondents, and we look at their demographics. We compare it to the American Community Survey, which is basically the census that's done every year. It's done by the U.S. Census. We use the five-year estimates, so that was for 2023. We used the American Community Survey data. We compare your respondents to your survey to those demographics, and we then adjust the data so it's representative to the demographics of the census. So, if there's, let's say, 45% females that responded to the survey, but in your population, according to the census, there should be 50, female responses are adjusted up, were given more weight. So, it's an adjustment for under or overrepresentation. So, that makes it representative of your population, and then you can extrapolate your results or generalize your results to your entire population with confidence. Okay. Spends a lot of time on methodology, but it's important. Okay, the results. So, the first section was on quality of life. We asked about perception of the village as a place to live, and it was a rating of excellent, good, fair, or poor. As you can see by the graph, the majority of the respondents, and this is the dark green and the light green combined, rate the village as excellent or good as a place to live. So, it was 15% excellent, 60% good. So, that's, that's a, a very good response. I do a lot of these community surveys, and we just finished several other villages. I would say that, that's, that's a decent response. I mean, fairly good response. People, you might question the 15% excellent. Not many people give excellent responses, unfortunately. So. When you look at age, interesting enough, it's the older respondents that are more likely to provide the excellent or good responses. So, less than 29 years of age, you have 70.3 rated the village as a place to live excellent or good. 79.3% of those 30 to 44 years of age, and then that number jumps to 89.7 for those 45 to 64 years of age, and 85.7 for those over 65.
Is that pretty common?
No. No. You, it varies. So, in some villages, we find that it's the older people that aren't as likely to rate it, rate your, the, the village high.
Okay.
Yeah. And sometimes we find no differences at all. So, yeah, that, that was a little, you know, different from what we've heard. Okay. We asked them two open-ended questions. What do they like most about living in the village, and what do they like least about living in the village? So, these were open-ended questions. We read through them. We come up with categories, and we call, we said, we do what was called coding. So, each category, so if somebody said something like, "It's, the village is quiet and peaceful," that goes into the quiet and peaceful category and gets counted as one response. So, we look at those, and then we, we come up with percentages of all those open-ended responses. How many said quiet and peaceful? You have 19.9% said the village is quiet and peaceful. 17.8 said it's conveniently located or near to work or amenities, has access to parks, natures, or open spaces. 11% has a small-town rural feeling or is a good size. 10%. So, those are your highest response, the, the, the most common responses. Interesting, quiet and peaceful also, when we asked what makes the village unique, quiet and peaceful came up. It also, when we asked about makes the village unique, a small-town rural feeling or is a good size came up, as well as have access to parks, natural areas, or open spaces. So, all of these, they felt may, also make the village unique. Having access to parks, natural areas, or open spaces was, also came up when we asked about strengths and assets for the village. So, these are, not only do they like them, but they think they're assets. They think they make the village unique, in most cases. Like least, this comes up throughout the survey. You're going to hear this again, but the need for business attraction, economic development, and/or development of the downtown area, we had 23% give that response. We hear this in every survey. High taxes, cost of living, this is not unusual, 11.3%. This is actually lower than what most, most of the time, most of the villages we've done recently. And lack of activities or things to do, 6.4%. Safety in the village, whether they feel safe in the village, was, was very high. 96.1 respondent said that they feel very or somewhat safe in the village. That's the dark green and the lighter green combined. But 53.1 said very safe, so that's, that's good. Okay, then we had a set of questions that really are perceptions of belonging, inclusion, feel that there's, you know, sense of community in the village. So, residents reported a strong sense of community and civic pride. 93.8 agreed they, in their household, think of Montgomery as home. 90.1 indicated they are proud of the village. 85.1 said they feel they belong in the village. Surprisingly, though good, Hispanic respondents were more likely to say they are proud of the village. It was 98.8% compared to non-Hispanic residents, which was 87.4. These differences that I'm presenting between demographic groups are all statistically significant differences, so they're not by chance. Okay? And then feel they belong in the village, Hispanic respondents, 97.6, non-Hispanic respondents, 81.3.
Wow.
Yeah. So, that's great. Yeah. Respondents report they feel welcome, included in the village. 96.2 say they, and members of the household feel welcome. 92.7 would recommend the village as a place to live to others, all very high. 82.7 say they, and members of the household feel included in the village, so that's all positive, good news. Okay, so now, next section. So, that was quality of life, kind of perceptions of living in the village. Importance of village provided services. This graph, bottom line is that they think everything's important. Of course. Yes, yes, why wouldn't they? But if you look at just the very important, which is the dark green, you do see some, just, you know, differences. You have water quality, neighborhood, street maintenance and repair, water and sewer, system maintenance and repair, garbage and recycling collection are, get high, very high, or get, get higher very important respondent, percentage of important respondents. Lower, oh, and police and public safety, 83.6, that is also pretty high. Lower is the planning and zoning, property maintain, maintenance and regulation, and green initiatives and sustainability. But everything is over 50%, so a majority are saying very important to everything. Okay. Satisfaction. Again, if you look at the dark green and the lighter green, more than, the majority, more than 50% are satisfied with each of these services. But if you look at the very important, to kind of make that distinction, so you could distinguish between the, the different services, stormwater management, water and sewer system maintenance and repair, garbage and recycling collection, and police public safety services are getting a higher percentage of very satisfied. Lower percentages are yard waste pickup, planning and zoning are the lowest. Business attraction and retention, economic development, again, lower satisfaction. I told you, you'd hear about business attraction and retention. Keeps coming up. Okay. So, this is the way to kind of understand all the importance and satisfaction. So, what we do is we look at importance and satisfaction together and see what's going on. Basically, this analysis, this importance satisfaction analysis tells you the, the amount of emphasis or resources you, you should put on the services. So, you look at importance, and you look at satisfaction, and you have your top left quadrant, which is improvement opportunity, which is high importance, low satisfaction. So, those are your, your areas that you need to work on. You need to put more emphasis on. And you have water quality, neighborhood, street maintenance and repair, business attraction retention, yard waste pickup, planning and zoning, and green initiatives. Then, in the right top box is your high importance, high satisfaction. So, that's where you're doing good. Keep up the good work. So, you have police and public safety is in that quadrant, the water and sewer system maintenance and repair, garbage and recycling collection, and stormwater management. Low priority, which is the, I don't have my left for my, the left, lower-left box, are low importance, low satisfaction. So, they're not very important, but they have low satisfaction. You don't want to put much effort in there. You have nothing in that, that quadrant. And also exceeds expectations on the right-hand side, bottom, is low importance, high satisfaction, and there's nothing in that quadrant. So, you have either things that you should keep doing, because you're doing them well, and, and, you know, but just keep some emphasis on it, because you don't want that to wind up in one of the other quadrants the next time you do a ser, the survey, and those that you, you, we see as improvement opportunities. Okay, so we asked the respondents, what do they think, or to name, so it was open-ended, what the vil, what the village should focus the most attention on in the next five years. It was an open-ended question. And 21% said business attraction, again, economic development. You have infrastructure, particularly roads and streets, which kind of is your street maintenance, that came up before as needs improvement. And water quality also came up as needs improvement, so that's about 10%. All other mentions were less than 10%, so less than 10% of the respondents gave them. But things like public transportation came up, I think it was 8.5%. Garbage waste, uh, pickup, it was 8.2%. And of course, the taxes, lowering the taxes, which, like I said, we hear all the time, which, which was around eight, something, 8%. Okay. Customer service. So, we asked if they have contacted the village in the last two years, and 22.5% of the respondents have. And if they have, we asked them, well, which department did they contact, and, you know, what was the reason? So, most, most of it was building or code enforcement, most individuals, and public works, and police and public safety. Permits was, was high for the reason, and just contacting the police, public safety also came up high as a reason. 69.5% rate their overall experience as excellent or good, again, the green, the two green boxes combined. 87.5% indicate the staff was knowledgeable. 84%, 4%, excuse me, 84.6% report the staff was courteous. And low, a little bit lower was 75.4% state the staff responded in a timely manner. Okay. Communications was the next area. We asked them about, from what sources do they get information about the village? And I noticed that in the box is missing, so it's the dark blue and the lighter blue. The dark blue is where, of the, all the sources that they get information about the village from. And then the lighter blue is their preferred source. Okay, so utility bills was the highest for where they get information, and 20, so that was 72.5%. 22.4% says their preferred source. Monthly e-newsletter, 50.1 get information from the village monthly newsletter. 36.8 say it's their preferred source. Village website, 48%, and 8.4 say it's their preferred site, source. And Facebook, 38.4, 11.2 say it's their preferred source. So, the nice thing here about these findings is where they're getting information currently are their preferred sources. You know, the top four prefer sources, sources are the top four information, current information sources. Slightly different percentages, but that's nice. We've looked at what percent didn't give any of the sources as their preferred source. And those are people that are not currently receiving information. It's 7.8%. That's fairly low. We usually get higher percentage there of not, there are people indicating that they're not receiving information. The interesting find is those that are newer to the village, that have lived in the village less than five years, it goes up to 20.6% say they're not getting information. So. Okay, usefulness of information sources. So, we asked about the different information sources provided by the village and how useful they are, and they indicated very useful, somewhat useful, not very useful, not at all useful. More than three-quarters or more of the respondents considered each information source, except the village mobile app, to be very or somewhat useful. So, the village newsletter, really high, 93.5%, both the print and electronic version. Village website, again, high, 90.6%. Emails from the village, 90% find them, find it useful. 83.6 text updates from the village. The village social media account pages, 76.1 find it useful. And when you get to the village mobile app, it's 53.3%. They also were allowed to say not applicable, and what's interesting there is that for the village mobile app, we the village mobile app, we had a large percentage that said non-app, not applicable. 62.7% possibly because they don't use it or they're not aware. Overall satisfaction with the job the village government does in providing information to residents. 88.1% are satisfied with the job the village government does in providing information. Those that weren't were asked to provide suggestions for improvement. Newsletters and flyers mailed to their homes, so they want something actually mailed to them, which we're hearing more and more. I think people just have had enough with the electronic, you know, the, the, the social media and the, the emails, you know, they're just inundated with emails and stuff and they want something actually mailed that they can read. We're hearing more, more of that. We're also hearing, what we didn't hear in this survey was more two-way interaction, so personal contact with, with the board members, the, the mayor, the, the village staff. But we didn't hear it in this survey, but we're hearing more of that as well. And they would like, this came up and this was an open end, improvement was increased awareness of the mobile app. A lot of people said, I didn't know it existed until this survey, so. So real quick, some conclusions, it's all things we've gone over before, but most respondents are satisfied with the village of Montgomery as a place to live. Three quarters rate the village as good or excellent as a place to live. The vast majority of the respondents feel safe, they feel welcomed, with over 85% reporting a sense of belonging and pride in the community. So those, all positive things. The village is doing a good job of fighting water and sewer system maintenance and repair, garbage and recycling collection, stormwater management and police public safety. Those were all in that top right quadrant of the, the important satisfaction. However, in the left hand side of that quadrant, services that need improvement, water quality, neighborhood, street maintenance and repair, business attraction, retention, yard waste pickup, planning and zoning, property maintenance regulation and then green initiative sustainability to maintain the environment. That last one, if you remember that, that point was almost in the bottom left hand, the green initiatives in low priority. It was kind of almost borderline. We find that respondents are not really interested in, in green initiative sustainability. We find that consistently through all the surveys we've done. Okay. The respondents were asked to think that the village government should focus its attention on business attraction, infrastructure, particularly roads and streets and water quality in the next five years. The majority of the respondents who contacted the village government in the past two years are satisfied with the customer service they received. They think, they report that the staff is generally courteous and knowledgeable. Most respondents are satisfied with the job the village government is doing in communicating to residents.
That's awesome. Thank you. Couple of questions.
Sure.
The, do you have any idea of the geographical breakout of roughly where people were?
Yes, it's in the report.
Okay.
There's a map under the demographics section and you can see where the respondents were, what area they lived in. We, we had a map and it was divided into areas.
And would you consider that breakdown to be sort of like representative of the village as a whole?
I am not sure because I don't know what percent live in each, of the, the residents live in each of those areas. We'd have to take a look at that and see.
It was 58 west of Orchard and then 42 in the other sections of town.
Okay. Do we get people who opted out? Did anybody respond and say, nope?
Oh, we sure did. We, yeah, we always get. So of those 2,000 respondents, we had close to 100 that refused. So basically, they either opted out on the electronic version, there's an opt-out, you know, option that they could click to opt out. On the hard copy, they just write refused or just send it back blank, you know, or they don't, they don't answer our reminder calls, yes. So we had a large number. We also had a large number where we couldn't find the right person. So when the, when the, the mailing address is correct, all the time. Okay, because it's, and it's, they, they use the village boundaries, it's always correct. But when you send electronic, an email, you can wind up with the wrong person. So when you send the mail, if that's vacant, so if nobody's living there, that winds up being, and we don't have a good telephone number, that's another way we lose people. There was, I, I can't remember exact number, it was probably close to 50 of those, yeah. And then you have the people that partially complete. So they had to complete the whole survey to be included in that 506. If it was a partial complete, we don't include them. And that's less, you know, the, most people fill out the first couple of questions, they don't even get to like half the survey. So you get, they wind up being taken out as well. So yeah, you have, you have a couple of hundred, I would say, that, that, that become ineligible, you know, ineligible in a sense.
Would you say that's commonplace? Is that more or less than normal?
No, it was about average.
Okay.
And so there was 506 complete responses?
Yes, yes. 506 completed, totally got through the whole survey, yes.
So my last random question. So we did the survey, we started in January and we went to May. Do you find that the time of year doing a survey has any impact on the results?
No, no, not at all. We do them, we do them 12 once a year. Summer doesn't make it, everyone says, oh, can't do a survey in the summer. Doesn't make a difference.
Got it. Good to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, going back to the methodology, well, actually just going back to what you were talking about. So did you end up contacting a total of 2,000 or was it more than that?
Did I?
How many were contacted to get you to the five?
2,000.
2,000 were contacted.
Were contacted, but whether we reached them, in all cases, we might not.
That was what you started with, was we have these 2,000 adjustments.
Yeah, I mean, everyone got a mail survey if they didn't respond to the online survey. So either, if they responded to the online survey, they didn't get the mail. So everyone, even those that we, so those that we didn't have an email for got the, the mail survey. However, whether it got, you know, it was returned to us if it was vacant, but there's other, you know, bad addresses sometimes, there's all kinds, and not everything is returned by the mail unfortunately, so we could count it, by, by the post office, so, so we could count it. So yeah, it was, so it was sent to 2,000.
And with that number, I, I'm curious about, were there, with the service that provided the, or selected, who was going to get it? Were that, was there a pool of alternate households that would get it if you didn't reach your 500?
No. No. 2,000, we get 2,000 households and we try our best to, to reach them all.
Okay. And then the actual survey, the questions, are those standard questions or is there anything that you would put in there that was different or unique to Montgomery? Are these the questions you ask when you do every survey?
No. So the way it's done is I provide questions that, you know, what I call sample questions. So we've used them before, we use them, we know they work and we know they work well. We've used them in other communities. And then the village has the option to modify them so it fits their village, so not all the services are the same that's provided in every village. So those are modified. And you can add questions, you can subtract questions, you know, we design new questions so if there's something you want to know, like the questions about the village being unique, that was new, that, that was designed because that was a request. We want to know, you know, what makes the village unique? What makes, you know, what are the strengths and assets? We, we've never asked those questions before, they were designed just for this survey. So it's, it's a mix. You know, it's not like, and, and it's not like, there's, there's firms that do just standardized surveys so they could do what's called benchmarking, so they can compare you to other villages, et cetera. Those questions have to stay the same, you cannot reward them, you can't, you know, ours is more custom, what we call custom research.
Okay. Well, I, I find this really quite interesting and I appreciate the work you've done on this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Schneiderman?
No, very informative, thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Please also thank your students for being kind and courteous and they're making their calls, because I'm sure many people have had to make calls like that. And every now and again, you find somebody who's very excited to talk to you.
Yes.
And then the rest of the time, you don't.
Yes, yes.
So thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Really quickly in closing, I just wanted to let you guys know that this evening, each of you inside the Blue Village of Montgomery folder has a printed copy of the full survey results with all the results in your packets for review and reference. This document includes all the data received, we received, so you can study it in greater detail at your convenience. As a next step, our department heads and strategic initiative teams will also be reviewing these results and will use this data to ensure the goals and objectives for our strategic plan for the next five years are aligned with our community input, furthering the efforts of our six strategic objectives, which were focus on sustainability, enhancing professional governance, engagement with internal and external stakeholders, strengthening civic and public engagement, investing in infrastructure, facilities and resources and economic development throughout Montgomery. So thank you again for everyone who participated in this process and helped us take this important step in shaping the future of Montgomery.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new or unfinished. Anybody have anything? Teresa?
Oh, gosh, who does this go to? Somebody over there, take your pick. I was by the post office today. They're, they need to have somebody come through and do some cleanup. There seems to be a lot of debris around and as well as the lot in front of it. Lot more debris on that lot. I'm not sure who owns it, I think it's still up for sale. So whoever's in charge of that lot, it would be really great if they would come through and just clean up the stuff that's lying there. That's all I have. Thank you.
September 20th, Forestry Club in the Friends of the Fox River are doing a river cleanup, 9 to 11 here at Village Hall.
When is that?
September 20th, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Cool.
River cleanup. And then October 1st, a reminder, we're having a cemetery walk for Historic Preservation Commission. And I think they could possibly use one judge or, I'm sorry, one actor, so they can reach out to Debbie Buchanan. And then Halloween judging will be on October 22nd. We will be needing some judges.
I think, did you, anybody else here, Jeff Zoffel just volunteered to be an actor?
An actor, yes.
I think I did hear that. Anybody who wants to volunteer, please step forward. Yeah. Thanks, Ben.
I probably have three or four judges that will be in my car for Halloween.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, hearing nothing else. Future meetings, the next village board meeting and intergovernmental meeting are two weeks from tonight, September 22nd at, starting at, when is that, intergov, starting?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock that night. Perfect. All right, we have no executive session. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
And we're adjourned.